... people in the public... Yeah, okay. All right, welcome everyone. We'll hold a regular session of the Fountainhead Council to order. Please rise for the pleasurable legion. Please remain standing for our invocation tonight. Thank you, this is Ms. Michelle Hasley from, uh...
North Chapel.
North Chapel. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for the manner you dressed tonight. It becomes wonderful if you help me please. Our grace is Lord, we thank you for our wonderful Fountainhead Council that you have brought us to, and for the true love servant who gathers governance, making decisions that would please you and benefit those that reside here. We are grateful for this meeting tonight and the dedication of our council members. We pray that they would learn, grow, and build us together in a just and honest way.
... that would benefit and be blessed with you in our community. We are grateful for your provision and ask that you would bless the children with your presence, that you might rule over all together here, that they would be blessed with your wisdom and discernment while you protect them from any chaos or dispermaning, that they would instead be filled with your understanding and forgiving presence, guiding and nurturing all of us on your path that furthers your plan for our lives, this town, and your kingdom. With grateful hearts, Lord, we honor and adore you, in Jesus Christ's most holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Hasley. And Michelle is Director of Peer Ministries at North Chapel Community Bible Church right here in Fountainhead. So, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Slum, Vice Mayor Dickie, Councilmember Contino, Councilmember Laje, Councilmember Elkie, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Hanson is absent.
All right, thanks. Before we get started, I want to mention that it is poppy season. The poppies are growing and sprouting from our VFW. So, if you want, grab a poppy for a dollar and proceed to support the Veterans Assistance Program. So, I got poppies, and you get poppies too, uh, this time of year. Um, I have a little tree that you could pass that down to Councilmember Contino. You can open that up. No surprise. It's just chocolate from our chocolate fin. Take one, open it up, take your pick of flavor, either a dark chocolate or a white chocolate, and pass it down, and, uh, just share a little treat with our council. And, uh, Councilmember Contino, it is not laced with anything but calories.
Wally, would you like mine?
Okay. We'll share the balance of it.
I'll put it in the bag for you.
But, uh, take one. And this is just, uh, share my little friend appreciation for an awesome Town Council, and thank you all for your service, uh, here at our wonderful town. And, um, and that is all I had for the mayor's report. Now, we move on to the scheduled public appearances. We've got a, we're fortunate to have Honorary Council of El Salvador, former council member Enrique Melendez, and we have some visitors I'll let Rick introduce, and, um, he's going to talk about the Sister Cities Program, and then I'll share some news as well. Welcome, Mr. Melendez, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Slum, Vice Mayor Dickie, council members, and staff. Uh, before I begin my formal comments, I'd like to have some personal comments as a former council member and as a resident. And, uh, they're directed toward you, uh, Councilmember Laje. I want to congratulate you on that convincing victory. Uh, I know they've put a lot of pain into your life and to your wife and kids. I applaud you for standing up and doing the right thing for yourself, for the council, and for the community. Secondly, Councilmember Brown, congratulations on your victory, and I wish you the very best. Two weeks ago, I was in Town Hall giving some paperwork to my favorite lady, Bette Bender, and, uh, a gentleman approached me by the name of Jeff Cohen. I never met him before. And he said to me, "Councilmember," and I said, "Yes." He uttered five words, "Thanks for your service." And that applies to all of you tonight, in my opinion, and particularly to Councilmember Contino, who will be leaving the council. I want to commend you on the work you've done, and you've had the support of the community. I'd like to always thank God for providing me with good health and energy to continue the things I do for my native country and for bringing into my life thirty years ago a wonderful lady, a guardian angel, my beautiful wife Pam, that without her support, I wouldn't be here today. And, uh, last, Mr. Buchanan, I just met you this evening. Uh, welcome to Fountainhead. I hope you have purchased some kettleers, uh, stock. And, uh, I wish you the very best in your effort to be the Town Manager. I would ask that you try to achieve the same level of excellence that Paul Norden had when he was our Town Manager, my good friend, who I considered the best Town Manager in the state of Arizona. Now, Mayor, uh, about two months ago, the Foreign Ministry asked me to set time aside with, uh, with the council so we could honor you and, uh, for the service you've given, uh, the community, and also because of what you've done for the Sister City Program, Germany and El Salvador. So, we have a program here today that'll be fun. It's meant to be fun and not serious. And, uh, we have some guests that I'd like to introduce. First of all, uh...
Oh, bam.
That's, uh, that'll get you in the mood. First of all, I have, uh, I want you to know when I come before a council, Mr. Buchanan, I come with strength. I have three former mayors with me here. First of all, Mayor Wally Nichols, Mayor Sharon Morgan, Mayor Wal- uh, Miles, and my good friend, the Honorary Council of Poland, Nick Horchim, and his wife, Elizabeth. You know, the, uh, when, uh, the general council, the fellow that couldn't be here today to present, uh, the plaques that I'm going to offer to you, I asked these gentlemen and ladies to be with me because they're a very important part of what happened many years ago between El Salvador and Fountainhead. It really started, uh, six years ago when a group of people, six of them actually was, uh, Mayor Nichols, Mayor Morgan, Superintendent Schools, Mayor Henry, and Frank Barah was sitting behind me, uh, the President of the Chamber of Council. These people went to four different cities before they selected Apaco, and I was just an innocent observer, although I had my own wishes that they would select that city, the beautiful city up in the mountainside where the best coffee in the world is grown, in my opinion. Before I get to that, uh, I want to go back to a gentleman who's my guest tonight, and he is, uh, the Honorable, uh, Coun- uh, Council of the Republic of Poland. Uh, last month, I was privileged to attend a accreditation ceremony where we had the Ambassador of Poland, His Excellency Robert Kupicki, officiate at this function. I've never seen Representative John Kavanaugh look up to anybody, but that night, he looked up to the center of the Phoenix Suns by the name of Martin Vortat. I hope I pronounced it right. Anyway, the accreditation ceremony, to me, was a tribute, uh, to Poland, uh, another Sister City, another possible Sister City in the future. Mr. Horchim was, uh, honored by over a hundred and ten people at that function, and he became a member of the Council Corps of Arizona last month. And speaking about the Council Corps of Arizona, I'd like to give and recognize Congressman Ben Quayle because he had the courtesy and the instincts to send a senior staff member to that ceremony, and we appreciate that. I'm speaking on behalf of the Council Corps of Arizona and a hundred and forty thousand Polish people that live in Arizona. The trip that suggested we select Apaco was full of emotion, full of heart, and in my opinion, we did the right thing in selecting that city. Mayor Miles was with me and behind me has had five visits to El Salvador. Five. Six, he says. I think that the country's going to make him an honorary citizen. But he and his wife Jackie have been there, again, five, six times. He was given the honor of representing the country of El Salvador with his photography, and, uh, he has done marvelous work with it, and it is being shown in all the embassies all over the world for the country of El Salvador. Mayor Nichols. Mayor Nichols was one of the first members to visit, uh, the country, and during that time... Nope. Okay, I'm trying to go back here.
Thank you. Now, I'll come and save you.
Here we have Mayor Nichols with President Saka, Antonio Saka. This was way, way back, about five years ago, Wally, I think it was. And, uh, he brought, uh, to the President Presidential Palace, a beautiful picture of Fountainhead and the fountain. And I'm going to be in El Salvador next week, Mayor, and I want to make sure that a picture's still hanging in the palace. I have a surprise for you, Mr. Mayor. This is a picture of you and the President for your records and for your rooms.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Nichols, again, has been down there many times, and his son, Dr. J Nichols, who's a renowned oceanographer, was very helpful in launching the Turtle Program in Pacific Ocean off the coast of El Salvador. He's been many times. He and his wife, she has been dedicated to, to the Sister City Program. Finally, Mayor Morgan, a friend who is the heart and soul of our Sister City Program with Germany, also El Salvador. She and an incredible teacher by the name of Claire McWilliams initiated the program, a great humanitarian program, Mayor, that you were part of. And, uh, I just learned last week that, uh, the International Sister Cities Association gave the award first prize to Fountainhead. And now to you, Mayor Slum. First of all, you attended fundraising efforts at Mayor Miles's home where we raised eight thousand dollars for the high school students and for the humanitarian trust. Two, you attended and participated in several Fountainhead events, including the final meeting of parents with chaperones, and I believe it was a month before we left. You were instrumental with Town Support of Mayor for the past four years in helping the Sister City Program. In two thou- thousand and nine... Here we are. You officiated in the most diplomatic manner with awful lot of protocol, a reception given to the Salvadorian Foreign Minister, the first time a foreign minister has visited the state of Arizona. We thank you for that. Please take a look at that picture. You see something different there? Yes, we miss councilmember McMahon, rest in peace. Take a look at all the other people. You're all smiling. You're all having a good time. Keep that in mind, councilmembers, life is short. At a council meeting before forty-four students and fifteen chaperones left for Salvadoran soil, you, Mayor, gave us a powerful message of support, confidence, trust, and representing the town of Fountainhead. This was, it's all about giving back to people. Please look at this picture, and you'll see in that picture the American flag. Our American flag flies, far within the offices and outside the offices of the city of Apaco. And now, Mayor, with all due respect, I would like you to, I'm going to read you two plaques. The first one given to you by the government of El Salvador. It's in Spanish, so, uh, the Council General of El Salvador gives and presents acknowledgement to the Mayor, J.C. Slum, Mayor of the city of Fountainhead, Arizona, for your valued and helpful support between the cities of Fountainhead and Apaco. The Salvadoran people will never forget. And here's another one. It says, "J.C. Slum, Mayor of Fountainhead, with deepest respect and appreciation for what you have done for El Salvador. Enrique Melendez, Honorary Council, Republic of El Salvador." Would you come down and accept me?
Very, very cool. That is so nice. And I accept these plaques for the people, for the students, for our council and staff and all of Fountainhead. Um, I just am the mayor, you know, and you guys did all the great work and made all the awesome connections. And the kids, the youth of our community built those houses and touched all those lives and gave a lot of folks in Fountainhead a huge point of pride and a great deal of hope in a world that can be a little cynical of our youth. So, um, Councilor Melendez mentioned already the news you'll hear more and more about. Um, again, our Sister Cities Organization here in Little Fountainhead has awarded the best Sister Cities Program, seriously, in the world. And then we talked about Fountainhead being the best in the world. This one, it's true. They actually were awarded a prize by Sister Cities, yes, for the second time, Sister Cities International for being the best program in the world. And, uh, I just have a note, Mayor Morgan, for you from the Town, um, Council, and it says, uh, "This year, on behalf of the Town Council, we would say extend hearty congratulations to Fountainhead Sister Cities Corporation for receiving two thousand eleven Sister Cities International Best Overall Program Award in recognition of outstanding exchange work done and to goal, to advance the goals and missions of the Sister Cities, Sister Cities Program. We are very proud of the work you did to rebuild the homes of Apaco, El Salvador, following the tragic mudslide. Our local Sister Cities Organization not only accomplished noble humanitarian work, but also allowed our Fountainhead High School students to experience the joy and rewards that come through service to others. You truly deserve the award. We are very proud of Fountainhead Sister Cities Corporation and appreciate your efforts, not only with Apaco, El Salvador, but Castorly, Belgium, Dürdorf, Germany, as well. Your efforts genuinely enhance the town of Fountainhead. Sincerely, Mayor J. Slum." So, please, thanks to your awesome organization, and you do great work. And that was, those efforts were just exacerbated by our connection to El Salvador and the heart that Enrique Melendez has for his native country. And thank you for allowing us to touch your people and your country in a special way. So, thank you, and thank you for the recognition. It's a great thing to celebrate and very proud of it, and I'm proud of our community. So, thank you. Thank you again. And, uh, this is just a small piece that you may be seeing for the first time on television, but, um, our former mayor, former council member, has a huge support and ongoing basis here in Fountainhead. So, that's just a small example of it. So, we do, we are very fortunate in Fountainhead. All right, now we'll move on to, uh, well, first of all, it's a rare occasion as well when my family is here. So, let me just point out them before they sneak out. My daughter Carly and my son Tim, and my beautiful bride of almost twenty-five years coming up December, Denise Marie. Right there, thanks for coming out tonight as well. And my mother snuck in too, Mommy. Nice to see you, Don Slum there. Thank you for coming out. And thanks for, uh, a lot of our other friends for coming out today to, uh, help with, uh, Contino and I's last regularly scheduled meeting tonight. Uh, we appreciate it. We will be here one more time, uh, well, a couple more times, but a special session will be held next week to validate the vote, which will take about two seconds. And then we'll have a gavel passing ceremony and a reception on June seventh. So, just before the next regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting, that'll be run by the new mayor. So, uh, everybody's invited to that reception and the gavel passing ceremony the first Thursday of next month, the seventh, at, uh, five thirty reception and six o'clock gavel passing ceremony, and then stay, like most of you are doing tonight, for budget talk at the regularly scheduled, uh, meeting at six thirty. All right, on to call to the public. Anyone with speaker cards tonight?
No, sir.
All right. Onto our consent agenda. I'll go through these items. Item one, consideration of approving the Town Council meeting minutes from May third, two thousand twelve. And that's it again. That's kind of been the last couple of meetings. Just one item, could I get a motion on that? So moved in a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Slum.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Dickie.
Aye.
Councilmember Contino.
Aye.
Councilmember Laje.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Elkie.
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero.
Great. All right, on to the regular agenda. First item, consideration of resolution two thousand twelve dash fourteen, adopting the interconnected trails plan. Mr. Mark Mayor, how are you? That looks like a taco. Exit out of this. Here comes that. Here comes that.
Mayor Slum and members of the council. You may recall that back in December, um, myself and representatives from Olson Associates, we were here at the joint meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission and the council. And one of the topics we discussed that night was the, uh, work that had been done by Olson Associates to bring forward at sixty percent completion, uh, the concept of the FIT program, as we call it, for Fountainhead's interconnecting trails. Right, it's our urban trails program that we started, uh, over a year ago with funding and support from the council. We're back this evening to show you the final version that went before the Parks and Recreation Commission earlier this week and was voted, uh, to recommend to, uh, this body unanimously that it be considered and hopefully passed. Um, just a little bit of background information. Uh, you may recall that the council had actually set a goal for this year to provide a multiple-use trail and bicycle system. We think this plan that we're going to share with you this evening brings that to a conclusion, and we would ultimately move into the implementation phase. You may recall that we have some funds requested in this year's budget to begin implementation later on this fall and, uh, be able to unveil the first of what we hope to be future trail sites. Um, this work was not completed by myself. Uh, there were two other gentlemen that also assisted, um, Tom Hoot, Development Services Director, and Randy Harold, Town Engineer. And the three of us have been working with, um, Olson Associates ever since. Joining me this evening is, uh, Randall Coff, who I will bring to the podium here in just a second. Randall has done the bulk of the work associated with this plan. You may recall, in this, in this current budget, we have some dollars set aside for, for their services, and, uh, tonight, we hope to bring that to fruition. Um, you may recall that when we put this plan together, we recognized that, uh, while funds were limited, we tried to concentrate on areas that we could develop trails that were already fairly well in place, uh, hopefully completely in place, so that, uh, with minimum costs associated with putting out some signage and maybe a little sidewalk striping, those kinds of things, uh, or street striping, I should say, uh, we would be able to utilize existing parking, uh, restroom facilities and drinking water. So, not surprisingly, the first trail we looked at was, um, and perhaps more fittingly, was a downtown trail. Uh, that's going to be showcased this evening. Uh, that's the trail that we were supposed to start with that takes you through to downtown. Um, I also want to mention that, uh, as I indicated earlier, that there are funds requested this next year so we can bring it to implementation. So, with that, um, I will turn it over to Mr. Coff.
Thank you. How are you doing?
Excellent. Um, as Mark said, my name's Randall Coff. I'm with Olson Associates, and we work directly with staff to, um, help develop the, the scene, the identity, and some of the elements for the, the trail system itself. And this was, initially, this was very early on. Staff did a great job of identifying probably about a dozen different trails within the city. And as Mark said, they utilized, um, existing sidewalks, uh, curb ramps, um, taking, you know, accessibility and things like that. And just to, um, help limit those costs and make this thing easier to implement. This is the first trail that we focused on here. We're calling it the Civic Center Trail. And you can see it starts down around the fountain, works its way up around Town Hall, and then comes back around, and, and you can, you can see on there some of the elements that we would have to pose on this trail, directional markers, mile markers. Um, the thing we're really going to focus on is the trailhead right now. And I believe that all of you saw this probably at the last presentation. This was the initial identity concept and, and trail kiosk. And we developed this with staff. There were probably, uh, at least a dozen or so different concepts we were going to lit down, and this is what we, we settled on. So, as we moved forward, since the last time we, we spoke with you, um, we developed a, a full identity package with colors, uh, logos for print, logos for signage, um, and, and a project-specific font so that we can keep the identity all the same and the system, so that when you see these, these elements and these items, you know they're part of the FIT system. This is the final design for the trail kiosk. Um, one of the, the features of this is normally when you, you go to a, a trailhead, usually the signage is very two-dimensional, and you just approach it from one side because you park in one spot. This is an urban-type trail setting. We tried to make it three-dimensional so that you have views from all around. When you see this thing from any angle, you can instantly identify it and know what it is. And it's just what happened to be the Orange Trail would be the first trail for the Civic Center. Um, a lot of the elements here, the, the native stones, steel, playoff, some of the things you have going on right out here along Avenue of the Fountain, um, just trying to tie it all back into the town. Another thing, uh, with this as well is, while you can't vandal-proof something, you can at least make it as resistant as possible. And we, that was a pretty, a pretty big feature when talking with staff of what we wanted to do. Uh, lastly, this is what the signage could look like. First, it's hit apart, um, when you talk about, this, this trail in particular would be the Orange Trail. Each additional trail would have a different color code, a different number. Um, and then the sign on the right would be your overall trail map. That would be the same on every trail kiosk. And you'd also have the opportunity, um, for rules and regulations and the opportunity to post, um, notices for town events, things like that, get the word out. Um, that's really all we have. Uh, you guys have any comments, questions? Yes, thank you, Randall. Thanks, Mark. The council, questions, where else for FIT? I can get into, I can get FIT now, right? That's what I've been waiting for this whole, whole time. Councilmember Laje.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mark Mayor, question, please. When do y'all anticipate completing this first phase? I know that we've, we've budgeted dollars in FY twelve thirteen. Uh, when do you see it's coming to fruition, this first phase?
Mayor Slum, Councilmember Laje, um, our plan is, assuming that the, uh, the funding remains intact, would be to, uh, begin to implement this summer so that we be in a position that we can unveil the trail this fall.
Oh, awesome, very good. And just kind of a, an overview, um, I know this was discussed, um, in strategic plans and so forth and so on. What, what strategic goal does this address?
The strategic, uh, let me, if I can, let me give you two. Uh, the strategic value is recreational opportunity amenities, and then the council goal specifically would provide multi-use trail and bicycle system.
So, this, this... So this, this does buy into the citizen-driven strategic plan and and that where our focus is.
Exactly where it came from.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you Mayor. Do you see any special striking to keep walkers and bicyclers on the right and the left side of the sidewalk? Or, or is there any separation, uh, striking going to happen?
Mayor Slum, uh, Councilmember Brown. Um, actually, a lot of those, uh, trails that we had picked are already striped for either a bikeway or a bike path. So we would envision that, uh, correctly, that people would be using, if they had bikes, would be using the road instead of the sidewalk. But most of those also have full sidewalks on them so that somebody, if they were simply a pedestrian or walking on the trail or without a bike, would be able to use the sidewalk. So I think they're, they're intended to be multipurpose. But we, the reason why we included those funds is was not only to do signage, but places where we could put a bicycle trail or pathway through there, we would be able to strike these, um, pavement accordingly.
Right. Is there anyone from the public on this item?
No Mayor.
All right. I notice you put no camping is on there, so, you know. People might assume hiking and camping, but in the urban setting, maybe not. But, uh, Councilmember Dickey?
Uh, Mayor, uh, motion to approve resolution twenty twelve dash fourteen, accepting the Fountain Hills interconnected trail plan.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, both?
I am, Mayor Sixty?
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor. Thanks Mark.
As I like to refer to, my name is Mayor, I am not the Mayor. I am just a Mayor.
I'm just wondering. All right, item three, consideration of the possible direction of staff regarding application for local transportation assistance. Fund two, project fund through Valley Metro for this year eleven twelve, the amount of sixty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars for transit purposes. Ken?
Mayor Slum, um, Deputy Town Manager Geddy has a, a presentation for that and will open it up for discussion. And recognition.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council. Prior to fiscal year ten eleven, the town was, provided special transportation services for residents for medical appointments and, and social services, and that was funded by a grant through lottery proceeds. And we called it LTAF two. In fiscal year ten eleven, the legislature swept those LTAF two funding for cities and towns, and the town had to cancel the program and residents had to provide their own transportation. However, this fiscal year, the courts have reinstated the LTAF two funds for cities to use for transportation purposes. Fountain Hills is eligible to receive sixty-six thousand dollars if we apply by May thirty first. Normally, staff doesn't like to come to the council and make recommendations or presentations without fully vetting out the program. However, due to the time limitations on this, because we have to apply by May thirty first, staff did some preliminary research on this and is bringing forward a recommendation to the council. However, um, if we, uh, apply to Valley Metro for LTAF two funding and we apply for one program or the other, we can always go back after we've had time to vet it out more and do more research and get more information that we are able to change the scope of work of that. And since subsequent to this passage, there has been some additional information that is even causes a small reason to do a little more research. Specifically, um, we are also eligible for what they call TTF funding, which is in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars, bringing the total for, for transportation program to a hundred thousand dollars. And both of those grants, there's no general fund match at all. So we're bringing this forward to the council for a recommendation. What we originally proposed and is still being proposed for the purposes of the grant is a, um, it just left me, Dial-A-Ride program. Um, because of the other, there were two programs that we thought would fit. One was a, what they call a flex stop simulator, which would be a fixed route transportation system that would go within the community and hook up to the bus, the regular Valley Metro bus at Mayo Clinic. There are some requirements that we need to, um, verify as far as whether we have to build bus stops, whether we maintain them, whether they have to be ADA, um, accessible, which would add to the cost, and not sure if that's something that we could afford. So for the purposes of filling out the grant, we are proposing the Dial-A-Ride. That is something that we can control the cost, it would be limited to ADA certified residents, and it's, it's, it, there are no other requirements where we would have to build bus stops because it's a door-to-door service. So we are proposing that in order to move forward and be able to apply for the grant, that we submit the grant for the Dial-A-Ride program, but with the understanding that if once the manager and we've done more research on it, that we will be able to change it to the other program if it makes more sense. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, thanks Julie. Anyone on the public on this item?
No Mayor.
Any questions for Julie? Or Ken, um, Vice Mayor?
Thank you Mayor. Um, I wanted to know if, um, maybe this is for Andrew, if it would be, um, okay to make a motion that, uh, in some way directs the town manager to apply for grants and for any other funding so that we make sure we have, so it's LTAF two and any other funds that are available for a local transit program. And do it in a general way like that, uh, 'cause I understand there's also maybe some flexibility in the timing of this also, and if, um, that was okay with a colleague here and with you, that we could put it in that way so that it doesn't go out as a recommendation for a particular thing and then we have to kinda undo that or maybe change that.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, you can make the motion condition that way, and you can also, uh, direct the manager to evaluate other options and to, uh, report back to the council members that may not be in the public space and may just be a memo back to you to provide you information and follow up on the other things that have been discussed, uh, as well as other programs that may have become available. Um, but because of the May thirty first deadline, I think you do need to give them that flexibility.
Mayor, the reason, one of the reasons I mention that is because I know there's a, a desire and there's been some talk about connectivity with the one oh six out of Mayo, and so I, I wouldn't wanna give an impression that that's out of the, out of the realm of the discussion quite yet until we know for sure.
Good, thanks Mayor. Um, Councilmember Elke?
Uh, Julie, is there any, um, hold on, let me ask this question first. Is there any chance that we could exceed the amount that's being, uh, or the cost of this program could exceed the grant? And any, any thoughts on that, would it, would the town then pick up the balance at that point?
Uh, Mayor, some Councilmember Elke. Um, with the one program, meaning the Dial-A-Ride, we can control the cost by controlling the number of trips, who goes on it, how far they can go, how many times they can do it. With the flex stop simulator, that might be a little bit more difficult to control the cost. We know what the cost for the route would be because we know it's six dollars a mile. We can control how many trips we do within town. What we can't control and know is the requirements for the ADA, the bus stops, if we have to maintain them, if they can be flagged stopped, if they have to be shelter stopped. Those are pieces of information that we don't know yet.
And do, Mayor, do we have staff allocated to manage, um, the riders and making sure they're not exceeding the numbers, or, and how much time is that, is gonna be allocated for that?
Uh, Mayor, some Councilmember Elke, actually, it would be Valley Metro that would be managing the program. We would apply for the grant and we would give the funds over to them, but we would set the criteria on the Dial-A-Ride specifically, we would set what criteria that was.
Right, and last one, Mayor, if the, if the funds weren't there next year, uh, does this in any way obligate us to continue on with this program after this next fiscal year?
Um, Councilmember Elke, we did question, um, Valley Metro on the likelihood of those funds being available in subsequent years, and because it was a court action that reinstated those funds for transportation, that it's highly unlikely that those funds would be gone again. That, in other words, the legislature can't sweep them again. The only issue would be, um, because it's driven by lottery proceeds. But historically, the funds have been there until the legislature took it, so there's, uh, likely to be money. Again, one program we can control the cost, the other one maybe not so much.
Councilmember Cantino?
Uh, thank you Mayor. I, uh, like the flex stop because I feel like that, as, uh, Councilwoman Dickey was talking about, gives us more opportunity to have people come into Fountain Hills as well as people that can't get out of Fountain Hills, get out of Fountain Hills and shop and do. I think that we're missing the boat sometimes because we're talking about tourism and it's on the agenda tonight to do that, to give money to the chamber to do that for tourism. And I think that this would be an opportunity for people to come out to Fountain Hills, see Fountain Hills, eat out here, and then go back home. So I, I, I think, I'm not for this, or I'm not against the dollar, I, but I think we ought to expand our services. You know, we gotta start looking ahead and quit thinking about just certain areas. And being handicapped, I think we can eliminate a lot of the stops you're talking about by putting them where they don't have to have a particular handicap because of the way the buses are constructed today.
Mayor Slum, members of the council, and I, I agree with, um, Councilmember Cantino and, and Vice Mayor. Um, what we, we, we just need to vet it a little bit longer, we just haven't had enough time since the, since the court case and the ruling. With that, we need to look at any potential unintended consequences that might cost us additional money that we don't have for this. So we wanna make sure that we've looked at it from all four directions. And then if we can, then we'd like to come back and look at the calculators. But we need to, the, the main goal tonight is to get that application in before the thirty first.
Okay, Councilmember Lujay?
Thank you Mayor, and thank you Ken, I was, that's kinda where I was, what I was gonna state. I mean, basically, we're here this evening to authorize, um, staff to go forward and, and put a grant application in. And as I look at the emote, uh, the motion here, it says approve the submission of grant application, uh, uh, funding an amount of sixty-five, you know, for Dial-A-Ride, um, the motion could simply just exclude Dial-A-Ride and just authorize, um, the grant application. Um, and, um, we can kind of, uh, determine that as we move forward. Or do we need to be specific in the grant application?
And the other item is, do we need to add the PTF? Is that a separate grant application? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, I was wondering if it was able to, uh, make a motion that just says, apply for LTAF two and any available funding for a local transit program, not putting the amount in there, and also not put necessarily the part about, um, being administered by our PTA, because since there is some, there is other information that might come forward that wouldn't be actually administered by our PTA as possible. So rather than, rather than making it narrow, I was wondering if it was okay to say something like that.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Vice Mayor, that motion be fine as a substitute. Uh, one more thing to consider in terms of grant agreements, if, if we believe that we'll have a grant agreement back prior to thirty first, which I don't think we would, it might be a good idea to authorize the manager executing grant agreements as long as they don't have matching fund requirements.
Good.
Clearly one way.
All right. Anyone else, or need to restate the motion? A motion or make a motion? Vice Mayor?
I move authorize and direct the town managers to apply for LT, LTAF two and other available funding for a local transit program and execute the grant agreement.
All right, good, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, any tip of saying aye? Aye, both?
Mayor Sixty?
Thanks. I'll see Julie on that one. Item four, presentation by the town of Fountain Hills Executive Budget Committee relating to a recommendation for funding and scope of work for Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce Tourism, Fountain Hills Community Theater or Youth Arts, expanded hand food bank social service, and Boys and Girls Club, Scottsdale and Key Branch team program. Ken?
Mayor Slum, members of the council, um, I'd like first maybe have Deputy Town Manager Geddy give a, a presentation on, a description of what the, uh, um, community contracts are tonight, and then we talk about the discussions and recommendations.
Good, thanks.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council. In fiscal year two thousand seven, two thousand and eight, the town issued a request for proposals with a scope of services, um, for specific services within the community and awarded three-year contracts through fiscal year ten for, um, social services for theater, for tourism, and for, um, Boys and Girls Club. Those contracts have been amended for the past two years through an extension. Um, based on the discussions at the goal-setting retreat, staff asked the contractors to propose a scope of work to the budget committee, and the presentations were given to the budget committee and are included in your packet. The goal tonight is to approve the scope or a scope and direct staff to prepare the contracts for the scope of services. And that, I'd be happy to answer any questions for now.
All right, good, thanks Julie. Anyone from the public on this item?
Yes Mayor, one. Ms. Bordeaux?
Great. Welcome, Ms. Bordeaux, how are you?
This is officially the last meeting, so thank you for being, um, a great man and, uh, being up there for us. And, uh, I'd like to ask, I'm glad you're sitting right here. I have a bunch of questions for Julie, I think, about some of the tourism dollars. The Visitors Bureau Tourism Survey that was done in oh six, it quantified how much it was per individual. Do you know how much that study cost, Julie?
I would suggest rolling out your questions, we're gonna run out of time.
Okay, so do the first one. The second one is, I know that we're proposing to do it again, so I'm curious to know how much that study was and how much the visitors do the studies in. The theater, I was lucky enough to go up in Connecticut and, right, we used to have on Metro North and go to the best senior theaters and then have access to Yale Repertory Theater in New Haven and all the wonderful summer stock up at the Berchtesh. So I'm a real fan of the theater, I've been to many of our productions here. Um, I'm curious to know though, I've been going through, looking at some of what the funninesses are of the theater, what pro- percentage of our productions, um, actually either break even or produce a po- a profit? I'm not the best researcher, and so far what I've seen to come up with is that they're losing money. Uh, I know that it was seven, seventy-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars that was in the budget last year for the theater. And is that just to fund the production? Or, I'm assuming, because I know the buildings they, uh, use are basically rent free for them, and so is the maintenance on this building. So I'm, I'm wondering, is that the amount of money that we're underwriting for the productions that don't break even? And I'm wondering why we can't pump up that theater to make it do better? I also was looking through the, um, proposal for the Tourism Bureau, and I'm wondering why we don't do a cultural spin on that? We have so much great art, why can't we combine like a theater, a dinner, art walk, some kind of an upscale cultural event included in the Tourism Bureau? That might be a way to get some people from Mesa, uh, Scottsdale that don't wanna drive all the way downtown Phoenix or to Herberger to have some, some great theater. So, uh, I know that there's a lot of questions Julie, I have people coming over the mall, um, but I think that's it, so thank you.
Thanks Donna. All right, anyone else from the public? Was that it from the public? Okay. Good, I'm sure we'll probably touch on those, and I didn't know if do any of the, um, of our partners, our, our vendor, contract providers wish to share anything? Did they say they wanted, wanted to share anything or just help with answering some questions?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, yes, the providers for all the groups I believe I hear this evening, and if you would like to ask them a specific question, I'm sure they'd be happy to come up.
Okay, good. Thanks Julie. All right, Councilor, we would like to start on this, um, I know we talked about it forty-five days ago or so and, and talked about, you know, some real general things. Um, now the Executive Budget Committee's done some more work with the vendors, and the contracts that be considered are in our packet, um, along with the dollar amounts. So, um, scope of work's included. And that's what we've worked towards last year and made a little bit of progress was trying to hone in on the scopes of work because we heard feedback, why are you giving money to charity, why are you giving money to this group then? And obviously, the scope of work shows that we're contracting for services, um, in the community. But obviously, um, we have the decisions council, um, and it's part of the budget to include whatever dollar amounts in the scope of works to accompany those things. Um, but I think that this year is, you know, even a little more clear with the scope of work. So I appreciate the efforts from the Executive Budget Committee and staff and, uh, and the, our partners in working towards that. Um, anyone like to begin with any particular program or any particular scope of work? Uh, Vice Mayor?
I, I have a question, since it looks like it's one motion, can I vote on it and talk about it?
Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Vice Mayor, it, it would be better if we break that one component out so that you're able to vote on the others if we're, we're going to do so. We can certainly break it into four, or two even, just one and three again.
All right, and just to clarify on the, uh, with Julie and, and perhaps with Andrew, um, the suggested motion here, and you mentioned it, I just wanted to clarify, um, are we, staff looking for us to make a motion to give you direction to work with the providers on finalizing the contracts? Is that correct?
Yes Mayor, that's correct.
And when would the dollars be, I mean, council obviously has decisions on how to extend the dollars. So we'd be working with them on a contract, when would the, when would the, um, affirmative motions be made to spend those dollars?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, they, um, I would expect that the amounts would be approved in the final budget, which would be in June, and at the same
And at the same time, we would hopefully bring those contracts forward. What we're looking for tonight is sort of, is this scope of work that the group presented, is this the scope of work that the council wants of it? And does it meet the goals? That was what the, um, when we talked to the groups, we had them come in and say, you know, we gave them the council goals and asked them to make a presentation to meet those goals. And that's what, um, is in the packet. So the, uh, motion from the council would be to direct staff to go ahead and prepare the contracts with these groups with the, with their proposal for their scope of work.
Man, because the goal I want is the beginning of a new fiscal year for mostly, well, for us and our funding of these organizations. And I guess the longer you wait, the further they're kind of hanging out there and not knowing what to, uh, expect.
Yes, Mayor.
All right, so we're not making a decision on what's being expended. We're just trying to help direct staff to get a little further down the road on these items, correct?
Um, what you would be doing is directing staff to go ahead and prepare the contracts. The final ratification would be at a future council meeting in June with the budget.
The, um, good, and I know Councilmember Hanson's not here tonight. Um, but we do have a new mayor coming in, of course, and one additional new council member. Um, so they'll, they'll have opportunity to discuss this at length as well, correct?
Correct.
Um, the other thing that we talked about and did over the last few years was that, didn't we reduce each one of these last year twenty percent?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
And the year before that was close to that, wasn't it? It was a little bit, sixteen percent or so, okay. So we've been on a trajectory of reducing these along with the budget obviously being reduced as well.
Yes, and for fiscal year twelve thirteen, there's no more reduction.
Yeah, so they're, they're at last year's dollar amount level?
Correct, correct.
Good, thanks, Julie. Just want to make sure everybody understood the process we're going through. So I, I just don't want to make too many, um, assumptions. Um, obviously, most councilists here is going to remain here. Um, I don't want to get you guys spinning your wheels if there are going to be additional changes, or at least not too many additional changes. So I can understand the desire and our respect for the providers to try to get as far down the road as we can. Um, council? Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a general comment on every, all of them is that they are all accessible to everybody. I think that was one of the things that we always want to make sure when we have a program or something like that, that there's nothing exclusionary about any of the contacts, at least that I could see. It appears that everybody who lives here would have access to these services. And that's important, and if I miss something, let me know, but it looks to me like that that is the case.
Ken, and I think that's good to clarify. There, the one-pagers are pretty good. I think it's probably not, um, a bad idea if you might want to go through those one-pagers for each of the organizations. Because, uh, folks, some folks in the public just feel there's money being given away. It's maybe not a bad thing to review the scope of work. Uh, I think each of them has a one-pager at the beginning of the presentation here. Um, and then it gets into a little more detail. But for example, the scope of work for the tourism, um, through the chamber is a hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars. And then it breaks down the scope of work there, uh, for the administration, finance, and management, the office of fifty-four thousand. And it's got advertising broken out and media relations broken out further. The total amount there, um, is about forty-two thousand. The niche marketing, uh, forty-one thousand, I'm sorry, there. And then it's got niche marketing event sponsorship, uh, for a variety of different things, coming out for twelve thousand. And, um, some additional printing and a contingency amount there, again, all totaling a hundred and three thousand. So the town utilizes the Visitors Bureau for our tourism outsourced vendor and has been doing that for a number of years. And it has all the services that the town is purchasing broken out in that scope of work. Did I miss anything there, Julie? Is that?
No, Mayor, that's correct.
It's in our packet. People want to review it, too. Uh, Councilmember Lozey?
Just an observation, um, as you go through that spreadsheet and the scope of work, which is the proposed tourism program, it actually comes up to a hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars. The town is, uh, proposing to fund it at a hundred and three thousand, two, hundred and three, two, for that particular program that's been proposed. And then that balance, um, of seventy thousand dollars is made up through other funding sources, I believe, uh, through Fort McDowell. Some money comes from there, some money comes from the state. So the total program is a hundred and seventy-three, five, with, with, that's the impact that we'd be looking at. And there's other people involved in helping to fund that program.
Good, Ken, thanks for throwing that out. Uh, Councilmember Lozey?
Thank you. Um, just kind of going back to a little history, last year when we were experiencing the budget shortfalls that we were, um, we very necessarily had to cut. And a number of things, we cut staff, we cut funding, and that's where we did the twenty percent cut in these particular contracts last year. Now, early on, assuming on the Executive Budget Committee, early on in the discussions and the meetings, there was talk of reducing these contracts again another twenty percent. And going back to a comment that I made last year around this time, um, there was talk, uh, I, I, I mentioned that, uh, let me clarify one thing, too. When I, when I refer to the community service contracts, I know we've got four up here. Um, but when I refer to community service contracts, I look at the theater, the Boys and Girls Club, the Extended Hand Food Bank. In my opinion, those are different than what we do through the Chamber of Commerce. So when I mention community service contracts, that's what I'm referring to. But last year around this time, I had mentioned it, we're having these budget shortfalls, we're having these difficulties, and these agencies to look at either additional cuts next budget year or no funding at all because of what's going on and, and the difficulties that the town's having. Now, early on this year during the budget discussions, again, there was a talk of another twenty percent reduction and maybe even a higher percentage to the community service contracts. Now, I wasn't at the council meeting. I was actually out of the country. You may recall I was on a delayed honeymoon. And staff presented that this year's shortfall wasn't going to be as bad as anticipated. So staff's recommendation was to maintain the status quo. And my understanding or review is that the council seemed to acquiesce to that and agree with us. Um, my opinion is that with these community service contracts that we have, we spend so much time, so much staff time, so much, the council time on these contracts. And what we're getting back out of them certainly adds value to the community. There's absolutely no doubt about it. But these programs with the theater, or the funding with the theater with Boys and Girls Club and the Extended Hand Food Bank, they all existed prior to receiving town funding. Um, and I don't think that if the town were to continue to cut or to eliminate that funding, that we wouldn't have a theater in town. We wouldn't have a Boys and Girls Club. We wouldn't have a food bank. Um, and I would like to see us continue down that path that we had discussed before about reducing these contracts. Because although the projections as far as revenue isn't as dire as we initially anticipated, it is still dire because we don't have the funding for the roads. We don't have, I think, what is it, Ken, about a million dollars that we've got to find out there to fund the maintenance of the roads. So it is still a dire situation out there as far as the town's budget's concerned. And I, I know it's, it's not very popular to talk about this. And it's not very popular to say, "Well, how about cutting these things because, well, you're anti-theater, anti-theater, and you don't want to feed the hungry." Um, but I think we should have a discussion about this. And I think we should move towards reducing the funding and the town and the taxpayer not continue funding these three community service contracts. I'm not suggesting that they be eliminated altogether this year, but I think we should have a discussion of some type of reduction of them. Um, just want to put that out there for discussion.
Thanks, Councilmember Lozey. And we'll get some Ms. Bordeaux's quest, uh, points as well. Anyone want to comment? Uh, Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the proposed scope of the work of each contract and direct staff to prepare professional service agreements at the funding levels proposed by the Executive Budget Committee.
All right, thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, well, probably some more discussion here, I imagine, on the motion, which encompasses pretty much everything, right, Andrew? Um, I think if, Vice Mayor, you need to break out the, yeah.
Um, the time I'm not to just exclude if there's a contract somehow?
Well, Councilmember Lozey.
So I can vote on the other?
Let me consider to make an amendment.
All right, do we have a, we have a motion to amend that motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need to move on that motion or we need to vote on that motion to throw a discussion on the original? So the motion to carve out the community theater portion and we'll discuss the, uh, everything but the community theater portion in the new motion, right? With the amended motion. All right, so we have a motion, uh, the amendment, going on the amendment to carve out, um, to separate the discussion. So Vice Mayor can, can be part of it. We have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion on that motion or amendment? Now that confused everybody. All in favor of the amendment, and give a saying aye? Aye, closed.
Senator Five One?
Thanks. All right, so we are back to the original motion, which is, uh, the amended motion, which now is the items other than the community theater item. Um, I wanted to just come in and, um, and then get some, see if we can get some answers or clarity on what Ms. Bordeaux had shared before we move forward on any of them. Um, as we would, um, Councilmember Lozey talked about, I think, if something we talked about maybe we should talk about almost every meeting, is the role of government and, uh, being in a small town, I think it's right up, uh, what Councilmember Elky had shared is, um, we've met with different organizations at times and they wonder, "Why aren't you funding this, you know, aren't you going to value this?" And it's often, well, yeah, certainly value it, value it as a community. We're just not certain. Like, government needs to fund this. There's other avenues, and Councilmember Lozey pointed out that, you know, in the past, government maybe didn't fund portions of some things. Um, and then there's where I mentioned at, on the onset of this, is I like the scope of work now because it's not, uh, too, um, it's, it's more and more common now for towns, cities, states, government to contract services. And that's what we've done for a large amount of time. So for example, Boys and Girls Club, just to pick one, it talks about what their programs are. They're going to run a program that does X, Y, and Z for the Town of Fountain Hills, and they're asking for that funding to cover that program. Is that a program that, are those services or that type of program something we would have done in-house otherwise? Perhaps. So we're looking at utilizing, perhaps, their leverage, leveraging their talents, their facilities, and their staff to, uh, affect those services on behalf of the Town of Fountain Hills. So I think there's two important things to understand. What's the role? What does government, the Town of Fountain Hills, feel is appropriate for us to fund? And then also understanding that we're not giving money to charities. We're contracting for services just as we contract for a lot of other services, including our town affairs, um, head services. So I just wanted to share that, and then I thought we'd see if there is anything that Ms. Bordeaux had shared related to, she mentioned the survey and, um, also the cultural events among, among other things. Um, do you recall what she shared and can you speak to some of those items?
Um, Mayor, some of them, Mr. DePamplio, at least the first question she asked was how much it costs to do, and I don't know if she meant to do the RFP, but there was no cost other than staff time to put that together. We didn't pay somebody to do it. If, if I'm understanding it, the question.
That may have gone a-
I'm not sure if it's a survey we did.
It was a survey that the Chamber of Tourism did that, that talked about the value of tourism, and that, that was probably that one. I think that was something that they had paid for, not the town. Thank you. Um, and then, you know, Mark probably made some notes of the, uh, what Ms. Bordeaux talked about, that cultural lens and, and exant- extenuating the arts that we have here and music in Fountain Hills, making sure that's plugged into our program for, uh, tourism. Um, was there something else that you took note of that Ms. Bordeaux mentioned?
Um, Mayor, I'm just asking about the profitability of the theater, and, and I think that's probably a question that the theater should respond to, not staff.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we, do we want to ask any questions of the providers before we move on our, um, amended motion for everything but the theater tonight? Vice, uh, Councilmember Lozey?
Just, just a general co- uh, comment with, with respect to all these contracts. I think, I think the question that I'm continually wrestling with, uh, with respect to, uh, Councilman, um, Elky's, um, viewpoint, which, which I respect and I appreciate and frankly, I don't, I don't disagree with. But I kind of step back from that and ask, have to ask the question, what type of community do we want to be? And as I look at these service contracts, to me, they're value-add to the community. They're amenities for the community. And you could go as far as saying that, um, several of these, well, let's see, we carved one out, um, that they in some ways contribute to tourism. Um, in some ways, they attract new residents to our town. Um, so to me, when I look at the amount of money that we would save by cutting these by twenty percent, it, it's not that significant. Um, it, it certainly is dollars, but I think we get value for what, what we're paying for, and it's added amenities. And as the mayor has stated, these are extensions of programs that Parks and Rec would probably be providing in other municipalities that we don't have in-house. As we are, what I like to refer to as a hybrid government, we contract out for a lot of services. And to me, these re- represent those, those particular contracted services. If you were to, um, pull these down another twenty percent, you're talking about maybe saving twenty thousand dollars. I think there's more than twenty thousand dollars worth of value to the community by maintaining these services and these amenities. And particularly, one, uh, does bring in, um, half of its clients at about fifty percent from out of town, which is, is a value add to tourism. Um, but, but the savings of twenty-two thousand dollars, if you were to get rid of them all and, and keep tourism, you're saving of a hundred thousand dollars. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, and it certainly, it certainly is a lot of money. But when you look at the grand scope of things in terms of our capital project needs, that doesn't even get close to addressing, um, taking care of our roads, taking care of our capital needs. I mean, if you look at our capital improvement plan over the next twenty years, it's about a hundred and fifty million dollars. So I guess the question I wrestle with, are we a community with a heart and soul? Um, or are we just, um, asphalt, grass, and, uh, mortar? So I don't disagree with the fact that there would be savings, um, but I do think that these are, are value adding. And for those folks that have an interest in these particular community contracts, Mayor, um, we did originally propose to drop these down another twenty percent. And through budget discussions, we've, we've brought them up by that particular amount. So I think I respect everyone's point of view. Um, when I look at the strategic plan in two thousand and six, and when I looked at the, uh, revamped strategic plan, which is input from our citizens, they are asking for amenities. And to me, these are amenities that are value adding and really add to the value of what I call small-town character in a community that has a heart and soul. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Lozey. Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, uh, I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Lozey's comments. And, uh, whether we have a heart or not, I, I think what we need to look at, we need, we need to look at the numbers. I mean, essentially with the food bank, we're providing thirty thousand dollars, thirty, proposed thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to give out food to those in need or to support, uh, to support that program. The theater, now, the town does support the theater in addition to the seventy-two thousand, two forty that's proposed by maintaining the building and leasing the building for, I believe it's a dollar a year, uh, at no cost to the theater. So even without this contract, we do support, and the town does support the, uh, support the theater. And the, the, the funding there is essentially, in my opinion, or appears, is just underwriting the performances. Um, and, and again, this is nothing against the theater. This is nothing against the food bank. Um, and then the Boys and Girls Clubs, uh, Boys and Girls Club of Scottsdale, uh, team programming that we support, uh, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. I know some, uh, up on the state have questioned the funding that we provide to the Boys and Girls Club, um, because in order to participate in the Boys and Girls Club, you have to pay a fee. So they're receiving funding from the town, and then you have to pay a fee as a resident or a member of the Boys and Girls Club in order to participate in these team programs. Um, so again, I just question, I just question the funding in, in years past, and this predated me. Um, my understanding is that the various community organizations would come forward and ask for a certain amount of money that was in the pot-
would come forward and ask for a certain amount of money that was in the pot, uh, that year and provide for a particular type of service. And then it got narrowed down to, to these three. Um, you know, often I, I've had folks come up to me, why doesn't the Rotary get funding to do X or why doesn't Quanis get it for this or VFW or the Legion or these sorts of different programs? And, and I do agree, can't disagree as far as the value that's, that's being added. I just question whether or not government should be providing the funds for these.
Thanks, Councilor Elke. That's Councilor Cantino.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as the former owner or running of the, uh, St. Dominic's Food Bank, we didn't get funding from the town till the very end. We struggled. The town was not there to help us. But we did it for nineteen years. And I see where Councilman Elke's coming for, but I also see that we need to help these groups, but yet what happens if we go away? What are they gonna do? We didn't have any help. And thank goodness we had some donors that at Christmas time would help us get over to the hump to take care of some of these things. Other than that, a lot of the food and the rent and everything was paid by myself. So we didn't have help from the town. So that's just my viewpoint.
Thank you. Um, just, uh, I can't believe the numbers are pretty accurate. We have made considerable reductions in these from, I think, four hundred and twenty-five thousand a couple of years ago, um, for all four of those, uh, contracts to about two hundred and eighty-five thousand, um, this last year. So it's been considerable and it's had to be because of, uh, the budget constraints we've had and reducing our budget from, you know, seventeen, eighteen million down to twelve, thirteen million in total. And, but the numbers are not, um, a large percentage of our budget as well. And as, uh, many pointed out, they're important services, um, but it's also not totally funded by the town. It's, it's partially funded by the town. Um, all these are only partially, partially funded by the town and they rely on largely individuals to support them and businesses to support them as well. So that needs to continue 'cause they're not reliant, they cannot be reliant on, uh, government, uh, Fountain Hills here. Any other discussion on this item? We've got a motion on, uh, ha- to have staff move forward as we see them in our, in our packets tonight? Uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. That, um, the idea of, um, saying that the, uh, tourism contract is not on a par with the others, um, I guess if I was looking at what is the purpose of the tourism contract, um, you know, activity, getting people exposed to the town, um, you know, I see golf, marketing, so, um, not to talk about anything in particular, but is bringing people in here to play golf different than bringing people in here for something else, another kind of amenity? So maybe the, um, what your goal is with the contract for tourism could be on a par with what goes on for some of these others. I'm not sure about the separation aspect of it, but, you know, I've spoken and, you know, that I, I understand and we all have that, our retreats about this, uh, kind of overriding philosophical discussion. And, um, it's hard to have. I mean, we, we added money to, for posse and for, um, some of the fire district stuff and, um, the fire department stuff and, um, almost every event we have can be kinda looked in that same way. You know, did we spend money? Did we give somebody less rent to use something because they're a community organization? So this really is a huge discussion and I do appreciate where you're coming from.
Uh, anyone else? Councilor Elke?
I'll defer to Councilwoman Brown. Thanks, Mayor. Uh, this, this discussion goes on year after year after year and, and it will probably continue well after we're all off the council. Uh, you, you have to look at, you, you take tourism out of the spin and you look at the Boys and Girls Club and you look at the theater and, uh, the food bank and you start looking at the children in this town, which we have almost nothing for the children in this town to do as it is. And taking that little bit of money away from especially the, the group of people that need to keep their children in the Boys and Girls Club and, and not being able to afford to put them there. Or you take twenty percent of the, of the alarming number of total of, of the age group of zero to twenty that we fed, that we fed two thousand nine hundred and seventy children up to the age of twenty, that's just through the month of March, take twenty percent of that out, that's almost six hundred kids. So I mean, you, you, you have to look at it more, a little deeper than just the dollar added to the town hall. I, I see a, a group of children that are in need, I see a group of children that we can help and I feel like we should. And I, I clearly agree with Councilman Elke, this is a tough situation. Do we, do we have to? No. Do we need to? Yes. So I, I, I'm, I'm more than stand as I did, what, three weeks ago or three meetings ago and, and hope that we don't, uh, lower the percentage anymore on these, on these four contracts. Thank you.
Uh, hopefully, Councilor Roger. Uh, Mayor, we'll pick a number. Councilor Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just kinda perusing the staff, staff report here, I think once again, uh, Councilman Elke raised a good point, it blows the mirror, I mean, where do you draw the line between, you know, government's involvement in these programs or not? And, um, as Councilman Brown has mentioned, you know, we could have this discussion on and on and on. We will and we'll vote and we'll do what we feel is, is in the best interest of the town. But I think it's important to know that when we look at these numbers, um, I know it's very popular to talk about subsidies and government subsidizing programs. Um, for example, the, the food bank's budget for next year is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, and we are providing them with thirty thousand dollars worth of help and support. Um, they do fundraise, um, they give you a lot of things, um, their funding comes from churches, foundations, clubs, grants and individual fundraising. But it's not that they're just kinda kicking back like it's social welfare and saying, okay, fine, this town's gonna keep us in business. That's absolutely not the case. As a matter of fact, I think we've communicated to the food bank very clearly that there may be a day where the funding's not there and they picked up their fundraising in the last year. So I think that organizations are in fact getting, getting, getting that message across. So this represents a very small part of, of most of these budgets out there with perhaps one accepting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Well, as long as the funding is there, they're gonna, obviously, they're gonna continue to, to accept it. And along the, you know, to address a couple of the points that Councilmember Brown made, you know, and clarify my position, certainly not against children, certainly don't wanna see anybody go to bed hungry at night or kids not have something to do after school. This is more of a philosophical decision as far as what is government's role in all this. If, if that's what we wanna be and that's what we wanna do, then there should be a motion to increase these by twenty percent, uh, and, and provide more, uh, taxpayer funds for these particular types of programs, not reduce them or maintain the status quo. Um, you know, I, I, a little disappointed, uh, just, I think we have, have had these discussions in the past as far as getting away from funding these community service contracts and the way that the motion's written out, it, it, or the motion that's presented, it does include, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, along with two of the other programs. And my sense up here, I'm sure everybody else at home and out here in the crowd is that, um, it's probably gonna pass and, uh, um, if, if the question is not this year, when? Is it next year? The year after? Just go onto the next council, I guess, is, is the question. It's very unpopular, obviously, and I expect there's probably to be a number of emails before I get back to my office, but, and, uh, but, um, you know, just put it out there for discussion.
All right, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanna support state a little bit on this because I, I think it is really difficult. What happens, happens with me anyway, when I talk about these things is I start to look at everything that we do. We start to look at Parks and Rec, we start to look at the fountain being on and, you know, I know we've heard the phrase nice to have versus need to have and there definitely aren't that many needs, needs to have. So I'm having a problem separating this from the other things that we do and, and my conversation is, are, if these are things that we like or we would like to have offered and is just a good way to offer it. So the only difference being that maybe something isn't done through Parks and Rec that's done through a contractor, um, or, so if it helps, that's, I'm just trying to give you where my mind has been going with this, if I absolutely understand.
All right, any other discussions before we vote on the motion, the amended motion? All right, so the amended motion is the three items, a bit short, uh, as they are presented in the packet, uh, to move for staff to move forward and crafting the contract further and working with the partners and then ultimately bringing it back to council for full approval. Um, so short of the community theater, um, this amended motion will cover those three, uh, services. Call in favor, indicate.
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call, please, thanks.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diggie?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Slum?
Aye.
Councilmember LeSae?
Aye.
Councilmember Elton?
Aye.
Senator five one?
All right, thank you. Uh, now Andrew, as far as this, we just speak on this as if it was the, the same item, just we'll be voting on it, um, or do we need a motion on this item?
We don't need a motion on this one, sir.
All right. Um, do we have a mo- can we get a motion on the, uh, the, uh, recuse yourself? Okay. Vice Mayor's recusing herself from this item. Um, can we get a motion on the community theater item?
So moved.
All right. What should be, Andrew, do we need to word it in any particular way?
Just the same as we did before?
Okay.
Um, ma- make, uh, move to approve the proposed scope of work for each contractor and direct staff to prepare professional service agreements at the funding levels proposed by the executive budget committee.
Andrew?
Um, probably should narrow that specifically to-
And the theater.
Just for the key-
Just the community theater, sorry.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second? Second? All right. Any further discussion on this item? And Mary here from public, um, I don't think Ms. Bordeaux had anything related to this one. Um, all right, all in favor indicate the saying aye? Aye? Opposed?
Senator four one?
Thank you. Thanks, Julie. Ken? Thanks, partners, for working with the town and working on your scope to work and doing as much as you can for the limited dollars we have. All right, item five, discussion with possible direction to staff relating to letters dated May seventh, April eighteenth and April twenty-fifth respectively, which were received from the Fountain Hill Sanitary District regarding the notice of reclaimed water shortage in the Fountain Lake Pump Act system.
Mayor Slum, members of the council. Um, just more of an, an information item and just the status, um, as you know, we received, um, a notice that there's a potential shortage of, um, coming from, for reclaimed water. Um, Sanitary District is working diligently to, to look at alternative ways to help provide the water to the contracts that, uh, we provide with the golf courses and with the town with that. Uh, as of that eight, April eighteenth, um, letter that was, uh, submitted to the town from the Sanitary District, there was a number of questions. We've been working with the Sanitary District Manager to, uh, answer those questions. I've been in contact with DEQ, with a number of, uh, individuals there to determine what we actually gonna need to do to answer, help answer some of those questions. We're still in the process of doing that. We'll continue to meet, um, to discuss with the council as, as we know more information about that and continue to work with the Sanitary District on their options.
All right, so any questions from council? Councilmember, uh, Brown?
Do we have any projected, uh, gallons? How short, how short are we going to be?
I'm not really sure what that answer is and I'm not sure what we really know what it is today with that. Um, we'll try to get that, uh, unestimated answer to you for the next update, the status. Oh, see, we- Excellent, that'd be great, Bruce, if you could.
All right. Chairman Hanson, how are you? What say you to our, your customers out there?
We're projecting we'll be a million gallons a day short. However, we do have things in the works that we think we're going to be able to take care of this situation and hopefully they're all gonna work, but we're ninety percent sure that we're gonna do it. But we get about two million gallons into the plant a day and we need, have needs for about three million gallons. These are rough figures. So we'll be about a million gallons, uh, short. We're in the process now of trying to lease some type-two water credits and this looks like it's ninety-five percent gonna happen. And if we lease these type-two water credits, we'll be able to take care of the situation at least for this year. So, but about a million gallons a day is what we're short.
All right. Uh, Councilor Brown? And, and for the duration until the snowbirds come back and?
Well, the, the lease of water falls off dramatically in November. It go, goes way down and that's, that's where our, our big problem is. We're gonna be out of water. When I say we're out of water, we stored water in the aquifer, that's the water we're gonna be out of. We should run out of that about July and that's when we're, we're gonna need this other, other water, which we feel that we're gonna be able to get, like I say, through these type-two water credits that we're gonna be able to lease. And it looks very, very good that we're gonna be able to take care of this, this situation.
For ninety days or so?
Well, we'll lease the type-two water credits for the rest of the year and we'll use what, what we have to, about four, about four hundred feet. And, uh, that should take care of it. Now, we may have to do this again next year, uh, but it won't change a, a lot of, it will go, this, this, go along just like it is now. There's our courses and everybody will get the water they have, just like they're getting it now. You won't see any difference providing that this go through. And again, we're, unless something completely unforeseen happens, we'll be, we're gonna be all right. So hopefully this is gonna work.
Advise everybody drink more beer?
Nope, flush your toilet a couple more times every day.
And just to get clarified, it's all about water. This is the reclaimed water that's spread largely on the parks and the golf courses, correct?
Three golf courses are watered with reclaimed water and three of the town parks. Fountain Park, Desert Vista Park and Golden Eagle Park are all watered with, uh, reclaimed water and the three golf courses, um, are watered, uh, with reclaimed water.
So the drinking water, we're not talking about being short drinking water.
Right, it has nothing to do with drinking, nothing to do with drinking.
The other end. Yes, so thank you. Vice Mayor.
That's actually a question, Mayor, thank you. What's the relationship between the, um, Sanitary District and the water company? Did, did they, who, who provides water to who with that? I, I-
Neither one of us provide water to, to anybody. The relationship, we, the water company provides you the water you drink, we take care of the water you flush. So really, the, the, the Chaffra Water Company has been very cooperative in this, in this problem, but they have problems too, which I totally understand. It's difficult for them, uh, the only water they can provide to us is drinking water and the price of drinking water to water a golf course is pretty high. Or the price of drinking water, well, you guys water one of your parks with, with drinking water right now. You water four feet of the drinking water and you pay a sizable amount of money to do this. We charge a dollar seventeen cents per thousand gallons for, uh, reclaimed water and if you buy drinking water, it's two dollars and ninety-six cents per thousand gallons. So that's the difference.
What, um, so the, the little part of the staff coming that says, you see that the water company is not gonna reapply to the ACC for reduced rate? What is, what does that mean?
Well, Chaffra Water Company used to have, years ago, had an irrigation rate where they could provide water for golf courses at a reduced rate. That irrigation rate went away several years ago when, uh, ADEQ wanted the golf courses to use reclaimed water in order to save potable water. So they said you can't have a re- uh, irrigation rate anymore. Now there was talk about, well, would you go and apply for that irrigation rate again? Chaffra Water does not, does not wanna do this. And I understand why. I mean, so, but we don't, I don't think we're, we're going to need that now. Yeah, and I doubt that they would be granted that anyways. I don't think, if, if the incorporation commission would grant them an irrigation rate.
I was, um, Mayor, I was thinking it was a reduced rate for effluent. That's what I was saying. It's actually a reduced rate to irrigate with potable, but they're not doing that.
No.
They're not gonna apply to that.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that. We think this is gonna work.
Any other questions, uh, Councilor Cantino?
Yes, um, I did a little bit of a calculation on what we've lost in the last seven years. It comes up to pretty close to seventy-six million gallons that we did not put back in because of this pump. And the only thing I got to say is we've been playing around with this for such a long time, all we'd have to do is make a call to Carroll, get the, uh, Fort McDowns and they would have our pump fixed within a couple of days.
We've actually been in contact and working with Fort McDown's representatives on this, they're aware of it.
I think, I'd like to see if it's done and get over with.
Yeah, me too.
Yes, Top former Leger?
Mayor?
Huh?
Oh, sorry.
Just, just curious, seeing you're, you're providing us this information, it's like, um, Sanitary District one oh one A for, for me hearing this information. I'm just curious, where, where is the source or what is the source for this additional effluent that you would be getting your hands on?
Okay, it's not additional effluent. The aquifer that is below us right now, it has a lot of water in it and we're going to actually pump water out of that aquifer. We're allowed to pump, when we put water into the aquifer, which we do all the time when we have excess water, we measure it, we've got, say, two hundred million gallons. At one time we had over three hundred million gallons on there. We're only allowed to pull out what we've put in. Like, we're not allowed to pull out anymore. By leasing these type-two water credits, that allows us to pull water out of the aquifer that we didn't put in the, in the aquifer. The water's there right now.
Sure.
And we're just, we're just going through what it takes to be allowed to take that out. Uh, somebody has some extra water on the west side of the valley, we buy it, so we can now pump it out of the aquifer and that's what it is.
My question, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Mayor Slum, um, members of the council, um, Mr. Hanson, that's actually an agriculture type-two if you're looking at.
Type-two, uh, type-two water credits are non-agriculture.
Non-agriculture.
Non-agriculture water credits.
All right. Thanks, Chair. Um, let's see here. Any direction the staff are looking for? There's more of an update, right, Ken?
Uh.
Not really looking for direction from us. All right, on to next item, fix discussion with possible direction related to any items included in the League of Cities and Towns Weekly Legislative Bulletin. Ken?
Mayor Slum, members of the council, only to, um, I guess, forward some further news that we all know about and that's, uh, Senate Bill twenty-eight twenty-six. What I'd like to do is maybe, um, ask the town clerk to, um, uh, elaborate a little bit and maybe what the town attorney can assist a little bit on what we're going to have to do to comply with Senate Bill twenty-eight twenty-six, the consolidation of, of our, you know, elections consolidation, bill that the governor signed last week.
Thank you. Hey, Evelyn, how are you?
Yes, Council, um, once that legislation has been pre-cleared, this is something that's going to have to go to the Department of Justice because it affects voters' rights. Once that comes back, we'll be working closely with the town attorney to make sure that we come into compliance for our next election in two thousand fourteen. It's going to include public changes to the town code that will have to come before the council for approval and a few other areas as well, such as terms, like mayor terms, councilmember, mayor's terms. We'll bring all that back.
Because it'll be different timing.
Correct.
There, uh, I forgot to ask, is there anybody on the public on this item?
No, there's no public.
All right. Anything else, Seth?
No, that's just a very high overview of things that are to come.
Yeah. All right. Ken, anything further?
No, sir.
Any, uh, council on any of the other item updates? All right, moving on to, I'm just saying, Top former Dick, right there.
About that bill, because we did have some people that were, um, concerned with our involvement and we did, um, join with the, uh, as the Capitol Times said, the flood of letters from cities and towns opposing the bill and in fact, there were twenty-seven county officials in more than forty cities who, um, asked the governor to, um, veto the bill. Um, you, we had a, a, the, the letter from the governor in our packet stating that, uh, yes, that twenty-eight twenty-six presents all local laws and ordinances and charter provisions if they're contrary to the consolidated election schedule. And like Deb just said, beginning in two thousand fourteen, we will have, be subject to, um, to these new consolidated election schedules, which appears to look like the folks that were just elected and then those who are staying on here have another six months, um, us another six months to their terms. Um, she said she agrees with the legislature's statement, um, that the end of sponsors' intent to consolidate these elections in an effort to increase voter participation and reduce costs. And as you know, we did that locally here by going to the all-male and ballot, which did both of those things, reduce, uh, costs and, uh, increased, uh, the intent was to increase voter, uh, participation. I wanted to, uh, read something from the Capitol Times, from the bill sponsor, Michelle Ujanty, representative, who said that not only will it reduce loss, reduce costs and increase voter turnout, but it, but it will diminish the clout that special interests, namely special labor unions, have on municipal elections. Supporters such as Goldwater Institute, which voted for the bill, have long accused unions of using low voter in city elections to help pro-union candidates. She, uh, says, quote, "This truly is an anti-union bill because now special interests can't take advantage of low voter turnout and that was used as a tool." Um, "The bill may result in more conservative candidates being elected at the municipal level, but denied that that was the intent of the bill. It may lend itself to, uh, quote, 'It may lend itself to more conservative candidates, but the goal was always to promote the voter's voice and that was the goal.'" And the league, and along with dozens of cities and, and county officials, including Fountain Hills, sent letters to the governor, uh, saying that the bill would increase election costs for some smaller cities, it would diminish local control and drown out municipal issues and elections where voters will be more focused on state level and federal, um, and federal races. And, uh, Kent's old bachelor, the head of the league, said that they don't believe that this was a good policy for the seventy-six cities and towns across the state that are affected by the change in this law. When you have a municipal election in a small town that is trailing all of the federal, state legislative school district issues and you get to the tail end of the ballot, I don't think there's any way that you can claim that municipal candidates will be getting greater scrutiny and attention. But then, uh, I think we're just heartened with the decision and, uh, there's also possible legal ramifications, uh, given the court decision about Tucson recently. So it was a disappointment, will obviously go on, but I wanted to be on the record for the folks who had approached us about, to asking us to oppose this, to let you know that we did and those were the reasons.
We've also had the opportunity to talk about it amongst ourselves. Do we want to do the all-mail? Do we want to change our election date? And we've always liked the spring election in particular because it was our focus of our town, it wasn't caught up in all the other things. So it's certainly not what we've always, what we've liked and what we desired. I'm sure there'll be some benefits and there'll be some drawbacks, but, um, it is what it is now and we'll see, we'll see how it works out. I'm not sure, um, how the, um, all-male ballot will be affected and I'm not sure, Deb, you do yet either, because that was one of the reasons we went for it on the all-mail was to get more voters their ballots, they encouraged them to return them and that's, that has occurred, but, um, not nearly to the numbers we wanted to see. But it seemed like one of the reasons we, um, that we couldn't do a mail ballot is when there are other issues from other jurisdictions on that same state's ballot. Is that going to change? Because it just seemed like if, if there aren't all-male ballots, um, for all jurisdictions, um, they wouldn't just do an all-male ballot for Fountain Hills with all the items on it, would they?
We're still working the details out with the town.
Okay.
So we'll have to wait and see.
And again, it is what it is, but.
It is what it is.
It was one of the reasons we didn't do, we didn't, we weren't in favor of that either. All right, good. Thanks for the dialogue. Anything else on the list, three, three updates? All right. Thank you. Um, on to, uh, what are we on, guys? Well, let's take this one slow. I think we're on our last motion for a regular discussion here, other than, um, I mean, council of discussion direction, our town manager, I don't think anything there. Um, uh, Councilmember Leger?
Uh, just, first one privilege, please.
All right.
Um, I just realized this is your last meeting.
It is.
How do you feel about that?
Well, it is what it is. Now, I've had a long time to think about it and here we are. Very good. I know we're not adding another meeting if that's what you're willing to do.
No, I'm not suggesting, we just may not adjourn, uh, uh, just, just getting your, I, I know you'll be here for another meeting and we'll be doing the, the passing of the gavel, but I'm not sure anyone will have an opportunity to speak at that point in time in terms of how that, that process rolls. So I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving with you and, um, I think you've, you've done well, um, you've done a tremendous job during one of the, you know, worst downturns in the economy. You've, you've served with dignity, you've served with integrity, um, you've treated just anyone and everyone that's come across this podium with, with respect, uh, um, not only in your official duties, but in the town of Fountain Hills. So I just want to commend you for, for all of that and recognize you for just doing an outstanding job as a member of Fountain Hills.
Thanks, Top former. Thanks. Thank you. No surprise, I think to most, you know, it's a complete honor and a joy to be mayor of Fountain Hills. It just is, it's just awesome. So it's my pleasure.